Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Seuss?
Yep, we can go ahead and look at the finances. In the superintendent's update, I'm gonna go through some things that I think y'all need to be aware of and look for in the financial statements, so that it's a little more understandable to you. Of course, you need to know kind of what you're looking at there. I left y'all a little folder over there that has some information in it. The first page of it, we met with the Department of Ed on Zoom this past week. And this is what they're projecting based on our expenditures and our funds. And it's, they're projecting us to end with $220,000, $220,514.06 at the end of June, which is better than all the money.
Yeah.
A little later on, I want to go through some of these things. And what you need to look for and what we need to change as we go forward, bring that balance up, because if you'll notice on those days, looking at it, you started at 2022 how much money you were getting as a district, and then how much money you're getting as a district in 2025. We'll go through those a little more. But the consent agenda has the financial statement on it. So like I say, I'm gonna go a little deeper into that. But really don't have a whole lot that you can do but approve the financial statement along with consent agenda. If you'll look up at your expenditures on the teacher's salary fund, our foundation funding is $231,347. And our payroll is $267,673. And what you see there is we're spending more money than we're bringing in. And if we continue to do that, our balance will continue to decline. So we've got some good things in place already that's gonna help solve that. And when Dr. Hubbell gets here, I'm gonna spend some time with her, and I think she's got some things to implement in the next year. And I think we'll be in a lot better shape. Okay. Any other questions? Don't hit it this time.
Would you like to go through the consent agenda and financial statements? Mr. Timey, second. I think I'll just have all the folks out. Close. Principal reports.
Elementary current enrollment is at 3:50. We started the year in June at 3:49. For 29 to 5:2, we had the Atlas summative testing for grades three through six. The sixth through the ninth was faculty and staff appreciation. And we had several activities for our faculty and staff and some treats for them. They were really appreciative of that. On the sixth, our AR field trip to Urban Air. We had 56 students make their AR goal at least three of the four nine weeks. And that was the criteria for the Urban Air field trip. So we were proud of those 56 students. On the sixth, our kindergarteners and the high school seniors walked through the building for their senior walk. On the eighth, we had our chocolate bar sales winners pizza party, and those were for our top sellers. On the fourteenth, we had our AR water party. 96 students participated in that, and those were students that made their AR goal for the fourth nine weeks. The fourteenth, pre-K had their fun day. And the fifteenth, pre-K had their celebration, which is their graduation. And fourth grade went to the nature center for their field trip. The sixteenth, we had field day. The twentieth, which is today, we had all three of our kindergarten graduations and our sixth grade graduation. And I included some photos of just the whole classes on the back of this for you guys to look at. The twenty-first, tomorrow, we will have kindergarten roundup. And that's where we do our registration and take our packets for our kindergarteners. So we'll know a little bit more tomorrow on how many kindergarten students we're projected to have for next year. And then the twenty-third will be our last day of school. That's just elementary. Thank you.
I know it sure sounded like the kids were having a good time on those days. They were.
Yeah. It looked like it.
They were. I don't know if you saw the water, the AR field trip with the water.
Got muddy, didn't it?
They were a hot mess, but they loved it. It was their favorite thing they've done all year. So just have a mud party. It's cheap and free, and they love it.
That's great. They appreciate it.
All right. This is kind of lengthy. I apologize. April in New York, very busy at high school. The total number of students at EHS, 263. April 17th, Ms. Shay Martin from the COOP provided CPR awareness for seniors who did not get CPR certified when she was here in March. So all seniors graduated with their CPR certification or awareness, which is required. April 18th, we had a makeup snow day. And we also had the RAD assembly, which is Rise Above Alcohol and Drugs. Speakers from the Center for Healing Hearts and Spirits spoke to our students. Dr. Kelly from the Bailey Group came on April 18th and worked on Atlas test prep with our non-English speaking students. April 22nd through 25th was Atlas testing week. 22nd through 23rd, the prom committee hosted volleyball fundraiser. The 24th, we hosted the junior high district track meet and baseball played at home. April 25th, we had our annual crazy carnival. But we split it up this year and called it a cool down and play afternoon. The state police brought a big truck simulation that all the students really enjoyed, even some of the staff. April 25th, softball baseball played at home. SFA had their yearly FFA banquet. April 28th was the last makeup day of the year. The 29th, we hosted senior high district track meet. The 29th, the band also had their spring band concert in cafeteria. April 30th, Danielle Galvin from Salvis came to EHS to continue dominant training online perspectives in ILL and our teachers. The counselor also hosted a high school information night for grades eight through 11. May 1st was the EHS Honors Banquet, recognizing National Honor Society and Beta Club. May 2nd, the eighth grade students went on a field trip with Ms. Mullins to the Arkansas State Capitol, River Market, pavilions, and Old State House museum. May 3rd was prom. It was held in the safe room gym. May 5th was AP biology exam. May 6th through 9th was staff appreciation week. They enjoyed breakfast from the Stuttgart Fire Department. Lunch provided by EHS PTO and tonic drinks provided by a high school parent. May 6th was senior checkout, college wear day, senior walk consigning day. May 7th was AP lit exam. May 8th was AP world exam, world history exam. May 8th was also the senior awards banquet at Landmark. We honored our seniors and presented 21 local scholarships in the amount of $19,350. And other scholarships from colleges, organizations estimated to be at least $118,000 overall. Two of our seniors also received a diploma with merit, which means they completed a success-ready pathway in agri-power, structure, and technical systems, and completed 12 or more post-secondary hours. We have 19 going to college or trade school, three enlisting in the army, and six entering the workforce, and three transitioning to play collegiate sports. May 9th was the US history exam. It's also graduation. We had practice that morning at 9:00. That 9:00 at 7:00, we had graduation at the football field with 33 graduates, five honor graduates. May 13th, athletic department hosted the 2025 Junior and Senior High Athletic Banquet at the England Fitness Center. Athletes received patches for letterman jackets and several individual awards. May 14th was the AP language exam. And Pam Allen, instructional specialist in math from the COOP, was an EHS instructional facilitator to show a walkthrough tool for math observations. That day, the Center for Healing Hearts and Spirits provided Little Caesar's Pizza for all the staff and students as well. May 16th was the AP psychology exam. May 20th through 23rd was the EHS semester, or is the semester test this week. Tomorrow, EHS church with facilitator will work with Wilbur Mills COOP director and co-director by special limitation on new letter grades. They were the only school invited to work with the COOP on this internship meeting. And May 23rd is the last day of school. Any questions on that?
Just out of curiosity, why do you stud our fire department? How does that affect?
One of our teachers husband is the fire chief.
Okay.
Is that part?
I would just want to say that.
Yes. Ms. Melinda gave us a progress monitoring report. Literacy student achievement more than doubled with a 116% increase, those meeting their reading goals compared to last year. Students in the bottom 25% decreased from 65 to 37 compared to last year. Students in the top 75 increased from 5% to 21% compared to last year. And this is based on star reading, written as odds. Math students in the bottom 25 decreased from 48 to 35% compared to last year. Students in the top 75 increased from 8 to 20% compared to last year. And that is the storm math, which is also written as odds. Community service, the class of 2027 and later are required to have 75 hours of community services, community service hours to graduate. And this year alone, students have completed 4,076 hours. Students can accumulate these hours with any athletic group or team, ease classroom projects, churches, community opportunities, clubs at EHS. Working at the food closet, daycare, set starts, library, more. The possibilities are endless. We have posted several community service opportunities available to students throughout the year. We have a built classroom where everything is posted. They get an email every time something is posted, and they can sign up on there. These hours are also tracked on a spreadsheet that includes all students listed by grade level. And every time a form is turned in, the students' hours are added to that spreadsheet. This provides students and staff with their records throughout the year of the school year. This will also be transferred to triad eventually, which is reported to the state. Any questions on those?
So how early can they start accumulating these 75 hours?
Supposed to be in ninth grade, once they are in ninth grade. Like, you know, starting? We go ahead and add them to our spreadsheet just so we have an idea of what they're doing in seventh and eighth grade, but they can't actually come in until ninth grade.
So like this summer, they could start?
Yes. We have, I think, four signed up to work with Mr. Woods and the custodians this summer to get hours.
Free life for your school. I know. It works out.
And the last thing is concurrent credit. We have two plus options. The first one is Virtual Arkansas. So students in grades 10 through 12 can take college classes online through Virtual Arkansas with Arkansas Tech awarded college credit. They'll have to have a ball bank score of 1060 on the ELLA and 1064 on Math or Science, Atlas testing, or 19 on the ACT. They can take as many as three college core classes online and receive both college credit and high school credit. Starting next year, the credit will be weighted. Students only have to purchase a book if the class needs a physical book. However, many courses don't need a physical book, and their copies of options have turned in over the years in the Virtual Arkansas classroom. Courses are $150 each, and Title V Part B federal funding will pay for these. The second option is Phillips Community College. Students can register as a student and take courses online or in person at Stuttgart. Same thing as Virtual Arkansas, they earn college credit and high school credit at the same time. The GPA will be weighted this year due to the new updated law requiring accelerated courses be weighted. Ms. Michelle Blastheim spoke with our students last Friday about these classes and opportunities at Phillips. And due to the new access law, these classes will be free for the students. They will only be required to buy the book, and we can also use federal funding to pay for those. Students can also enroll at other local colleges as well just to get a head start on college credit, trade schools, et cetera, and earn high school credits as well. Students just have to get an official transcript sent to the high school so that we can award those credits. This year, four seniors took advantage of those opportunities and completed at least 14 college courses total and received both college and high school credit for these courses. Any questions? Thank you.
I hope you certainly take those concurrent credit classes. I mean, you can't go wrong getting great college credit while you're in high school. I believe Linda's up.
I think you all have a copy of our school improvement plan in your pack. Yes. And on the table, I didn't make everybody a coffee, but that's how the school report card is determined. So that's pretty important information. But it basically says, for a high school, this is how you get your letter grade. Third of it is through achievement. On the Atlas test, which is our state assessment, students that score three or four, those are your highest students. A third of our grade is students that score three or four on the Atlas test. Right there is third. The other third is growth. Growth of all students, any students that improve, we give points for them, because all students have a growth, individual growth target. And then our lowest 25%, and this is very important, your lowest quartile, you want to grow them, because we get points for that. So that's another third. And then something that's different from the high school and the elementary is we have success-ready graduates figured in, sorry, yes. Figured into our letter grade. And those are students graduating on time in four years and students demonstrating post-secondary readiness for enlistment, enrollment, or employment. That is a third of our grade also. So that's how the letter grade, the new formula is, based on the new assessment atlas. You take that, and you take your needs assessment that we send out. I send out a needs assessment three times a year. It goes along with federal. Can't just put federal or want to. You gotta do a needs assessment and say, this is where our needs are, and this is where we're gonna allocate the money. We do a needs assessment. I do one in the fall. I do one in the spring. It goes to both campuses, and I do one on my campus mid-year also. And then you look all your data, and then you come up with a school improvement plan. And our school improvement plan specifically targets what they look for when they're figuring our letter grade. So you've got to strengthen your tier one core instruction, of course. That's whole group instruction where everybody gets. You've got to strengthen that. How do you do it? You can look. I've listed several of our actions we have in there. You've, you know, you've got to have good curriculum. Your teachers need to be using their performance level descriptors. That's, that's really a key for high school. That's the number one thing the Department of Ed says a high student can improve their letter grade is they can be looking at the performance level descriptors for Atlas, because it is like a roadmap that says, I have this standard, and I want a student to perform a three on this standard. This is what I do. So it's super important to be looking at your PLDs. I think the most important thing, though, for our school is, it's not that our students don't know the answer. They don't understand the question to figure out how to get the answer. If you don't understand the question because of the vocabulary in it, you're going to fail every time, because you don't know what they're asking. So it's very important that our teachers assess the students in their classroom like they're being assessed on the Atlas. They need to be using those power words. They need to be talking about analyzing and synthesizing vocabulary. They need to be using that vocabulary. That's a key, key takeaway. And the other most important thing probably that we could do to improve core instruction, in my opinion, and this is everybody's opinion, you've got to be in those classrooms. Your leaders got to be in those classrooms, and they got to see what those teachers are doing. They got to perform their walkthroughs. You got to do your observations. And you got to provide feedback to those teachers. You got to support your teachers instructionally. You've got to. We got to be in those classrooms, and you got to be providing them feedback saying, these are some great things, but here's some things you can do to improve too. That's super important. You got to be in those classrooms. The next one really ties into your federal and state categorical money, and that is your target interventions. That's your tier two and three. Those are your students that aren't quite getting it before one instruction. So they either need pullouts, or they need strategic reading at the high school. And that's where we choose to put a lot of our ESA funds, that's enhanced student achievement money, that's state categorical. We use that to fund two instructional interventionists, one for math and one for literacy. And in literacy, she does strategic reading and academic reading. That's another important thing they said that you could do at the high school to improve instruction is have strategic reading. All those students that are below their reading levels, they can be put in strategic reading, and she does target interventions with ILL. And we use our SPED and our credit recovery in ALE, use a dentum, and use federal funds to pay for that. Newsella is also paid with federal funds, ILL 45 and ILL ELL. And lastly, your success-ready graduates. Third of your letter grade comes from how many kids are graduating on time? How many have concurrent? How many are gonna have a diploma of distinction or merit? So our goals there are just to collaborate with the colleges. We're gonna use Title V Part B. We've got to give them training in CTE and the pathways. And then your parents and students have to know what's available to them and how to get it. So you need to have those parent nights. Number one thing to improve our letter grade at England High School is you got to, you've got to set a culture where academics matter. If they don't think academics matter, your students, senior teachers, it's not gonna work. Academics have to be first, from everything you do. From the way you set your master schedule down to how you do announcements during the day, to if you're attending the PD with the teachers, if you're in the classrooms watching them teach. All of that, academics have to be a priority, including our parent nights. You need to have people show up to parent nights, just like you do to football games or basketball games. If we have a poetry night, a literacy night, a math night, people need to be there. They need to see their leaders there. They need to see their school board members there. They need to know it's important. It's not just about athletics. Because if y'all see one thing in that report card that said anything about state championships or football or basketball games that are won, nope, it's all about academics. So we just got to set a school culture that says academics, that's the priority.
What communication goes out to the parents? Like I did along this step, I hadn't heard this going on.
You mean like poetry night and all that? We do Facebook posts. We do remind. What else do we do?
Our website has an app with it that is called Real Share.
You thought about doing emails?
Well, it sends voice call or text message, and then also posts to our Facebook page in our website.
Well, I get the text, but I don't go to the website. I mean, but something that you don't have to go to a website, like a text or an email or something like that, I think would get more response.
We strongly encourage everyone to get the app. We go over that, I know, at Open House and during our parent nights and parent teacher conference, we really strongly, because we have that free app that's right there. And I've said several times, I've sent reminders to parents and said, hey, look what we have at EHS. We have before and after-school tutoring, which, by the way, is running the newspaper every week in September that says we have after-school tutoring, free of charge, by a certified teacher for math or literacy. I've had not one student take us up on it this year.
You were talking about the school board not attending, but we didn't know.
Yeah. We just.
Well, the district has a mass texting system when the weather's bad. Why can't that, I mean, you pay for it, why can't that system be used to send texts out?
I get that.
It's been going out, but I'm assuming it's only going to?
Parents.
Parents, not to?
I would think they'd have to fix.
They'd have to be signed up.
Put them on it?
Yeah, you have to check that.
We just have to check the box for y'all.
So you can check a box, and we will get that email?
Right.
I mean, that text?
I think so, yeah.
That would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like, Joey, I'll read a text. But sometime, I'm not gonna check emails and stuff every day, or even the iPad. But I'll read a text.
There are so many posts made on our Facebook page. I've noticed, like, I can post something, and within 10 minutes, three other posts have been made, because it's a district Facebook page, and the elementary's posting, and we're posting. And sometimes athletics is shared on there, too. So it's easy to miss a post about, oh, we're having poetry night tonight, or, oh, we're having math night. So.
Well, I mean, I've got the board on the group, so when I send out a text, does Miss Linda? Had the wrong phone number on, by the way. I'm sorry about that. But anyway, if you've got a group, especially of parents that need to see that their kids get to that, why can't that group of texts be sent out instead of sending it out like a mass text for whether you could have a basic group to send it out to?
And I think you can, if, am I wrong, but can you just send it out to high school parents?
Yeah, we can. We have it set by grade level.
It's broken down all the way, how we.
Yeah. So grade level, it's by school, staff.
So I have a question on this tier one, tier two, tier three. So in this, I see this got like ILL data, star reading, star math, all that data stuff. So when you guys are pulling kids, is this, you're essentially creating a pathway to help them learn, right? Is there milestones within that besides just testing?
Yeah, there's, like, in the classroom?
Yeah.
It's so.
Well, I'm saying, like, with these, with these team members, are they tracking a milestone to where they can, if they're reaching this milestone on time, on track? Like, hey, we pulled them here in 15 days. We're expecting them to be here.
Yep. You have to progress monitor. So students into year three have to be progress monitored every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
So, yes.
Are we doing anything different for this coming year than what we did this past year to try to help improve?
Well, one thing we're doing differently is I'm hoping we're gonna have a math interventionist that I'm gonna have, if we stick with the guy, I think we're, y'all are, y'all are, did you guys me? My football coach, I'll have him one extra period, because I didn't have Coach Willis a period. He had to go to ALE. So that was a whole period that he didn't pull any students or interventions, because he had to go to ALE every day at 9:00. So that will help.
Well, you mentioned, you know, the culture had to be to it. Are you saying we don't have that culture now that?
I feel like athletics are definitely a priority, more so than academics. I mean, we can, you know, I can do an improvement plan. I do the strategic plan. We pull data. We have district, not district. We have department meetings once a month. So high school's a little different than elementary. We don't have common planning time. It's impossible to have common planning time at a high school, the way the schedule has to work. We just, they have a luxury of that. It's elementary school. At the high school, we don't. So every time I have a departmental meeting, I have to get at least one teacher covering. You know what that means? If I'm covering that teacher, is that, that class getting instruction? No. Covering means I'm just putting someone in there to watch that class while they do seatwork, because I had to have that teacher come to me and do a departmental meeting where we analyze the data and decide, or do we have the right kids in RTI? Do we need to move them? Because you can't just keep kids in RTI all year and say, nope. You do the data, and then we look at it quarterly, and we say, hey, this, and we really did that this year. We wanted those kids. No, you're not just taking these assessments as a checkbox. We're really looking at it, and if you improve, you get out of RTI. You don't improve, you're staying in it, or you're gonna be added to it. So, because we really want them to take the inrooms seriously and know that it's just not as checking a box. We're really looking at that data.
But specifically, what are you gonna do different next year to help improve the scores?
Well, I'm hoping we're gonna have leadership meetings. That's a big one. We, you know how many district leadership meetings we had this year?
Oh, yeah.
One in October, and I had to beg for that, because I got the needs assessment. Needs assessment does you no good if I do a comprehensive needs assessment on what the district needs according to the teachers and students if nobody looks at it but one person. Has to be a team. You have to have your SPED teacher looking at it. Your superintendent needs to look at it. Your principals need to look at it. Your technology coordinator needs to look at it. All of us have to be a team to look at it. That needs to improve, and I'm hoping that will prove, improve with new leadership. But we have to have district and school leadership teams. Number one thing, Mr. Scott will tell you that. You got to have those leadership teams.
I think we need communication, too. If it's not happening, it's something that's important. We need to know.
If y'all want to know, I will let you know.
I've got a silly question to ask. You said you can't get all these people together, because you've got to put a teacher in, and they're not teaching. Ever thought about meeting after school? When I was teaching, we met after school.
They already go to 4:11, Mr. Scott. You can't make them stay later. And if they're sitting there, and they're griping, and they're disgruntled, and they're not listening, and they're staring off, there's no need to have a meeting at all, anyway.
Well, that's a shame.
What about those?
They could be honest.
The teachers, the teachers.
The teachers, the teachers.
What about the Monday? What about the one Monday they have to work a month?
Yeah. It looks like that'd be a great time.
Yeah.
That Monday that all teachers have to be here.
Well, we.
We what?
We don't have any Mondays next year.
We may have any Monday.
Well, we don't, I don't understand that. You're only working four days a week next year. What I understand, we have.
They're working their 190 days, but they're, they're getting all their days in front of the summer. They're not gonna work anywhere on Monday, on Mondays.
Well, I think we ought to be dealing with the needs of the student to the needs of the teacher, if that's the case. My personal opinion.
When do they change the deal to work in the summers instead of the Mondays?
I would say that would've been an administrative decision. I wasn't in on that decision.
No, that decision was by the person that worked it in.
I think it was PCP something, maybe.
PC.
We approved that a few meetings ago, or a few months ago.
But once again, nothing goes through PPC that doesn't first go through the student.
Great. We really don't know what we're looking at with that stuff.
A note for Dr. Hubbell.
Yeah. As far as, is there a correlation with, is there an issue with behavior, behavior issues, fighting, things like that in the school? Does that seem to correlate with some of the kids that may be in these tier two, tier three groups? As far as behavior-wise?
Yeah, because when they're either in ISS, or they get sent home when they're on, you know, out of school suspension, they're not getting any teacher-led instruction. So it absolutely is. There's a high correlation there. Sure is. That's why we did the behavior incentives this year. Um, we, you know, use some ESA funds to do some behavior incentives, trying to encourage students, um, to behave and they would get some rewards, kinda like we do the AR field trip. I know y'all heard her say that, but it really is a big deal and our students need, like, it's a really big deal. We only have two hundred and something students at the high school. We had over a hundred and fifty make their AR go last, um, nine weeks and that's at a high school. Where kids definitely don't wanna read and do all that. That was a very, very big deal for us to have that many kids make their reading though because if you're reading all other subjects, you can't, you do any subjects, you can't read. And I don't know if you've seen math lately, but math is a lot of reading, a lot of reading on those assessments.
You mentioned the intervention of math and literacy. How many students actually go through that? I mean, you've had Coach Willis, I think, was one of them. How many students did we run through intervention?
Coach Willis had eighty something students in interventions and, um, just RTI pullouts. Melissa Kason had the same amount, she had like seventy-seven, but when you throw in strategic reading, she had about a hundred, about a hundred drilled.
Eight hundred, is that them working there in the summer? Because I know that I should remember the summer.
So, does your summer, so the days are their professional development days to meet their one ninety. It's like, to meet their one ninety, so schools that, that work five day school weeks, their teachers have to get their professional development in the summer because they don't have days and so that's what that is. It's not, they're not working to get their professional development. And then we also have two on each campus, they have two of those days they can come and order plans, two planning days, flex days, two planning days.
Well, let me ask you another question. How many teachers get their professional development days throughout the year? I mean, not all of them get them in the summer, yeah.
Mine did this year.
If you're using one of your one ninety during the year, then.
Well, they can't count professional development, um, if it's, uh, as you know, during a school day. If it's a school day, you can't count it towards a required thirty-six hours, which is what licensed employees have to have. But all my employees, since we offer flex days this year, they slowly implemented it a little bit this year. And so, they had to have all their, they, they had flex days. And if they got their professional development up front, they'd have to come on some Mondays. And because of that, I actually had to have them all turn in their professional development to me in September so I knew if they had their PD up front to know if they could qualify for the flex days. And all my teachers got their professional development up front because they didn't want those flex days. Which I will say is a plus because my teachers don't get their professional development, one, their, their pay is stopped, but two, they're not growing in their field. The teachers asked, in the needs assessment, they asked to do more professional development on their own because we as a district cannot provide professional development for, for everyone. That, because PD is not a one fit all thing. You had, like, our art teachers wanted to go to specific art PD, our health teachers wanted to go to health, our English teachers wanted to go to English, we can't offer PD. We basically offer your required professional development, whether it be suicide prevention, anti-bullying, mandated report, whatever, parental involvement, we offer all that. And then they are able to go and get whatever their, like, professional growth plan specifically need.
We appear to have a lot of federal funding, is there not any way that some of that could be utilized to have these teachers stay an hour after and meet on these, I mean, to me, that's one of the most important things we're talking about here.
You want me to? You wanna try to budget federal to where you pay them to stay an hour over?
Well, that's what it has to take. I mean, we're buying twenty's ho-hos now, so let's do something that's gonna improve.
Not with federal, that would be state categorical because I don't, I don't budget food out of federal.
We need those people meeting and investing in what we're trying to do or we're wasting our time.
We do, we meet, so they, they're PLCs and we do, I just, I can't have all three of them meet at once without at least covering one because of the master schedule fits. But we do have our meetings, we look at our data, but you wanted to know what's the number one thing we can do to improve? You gotta make academics a priority and that's all there is to it, it's gotta be.
I saw you say how we were coming one Monday a month and then all, and they were still getting their training time in there, but now we can't do it.
I don't know why that's changed.
I know they just keep, uh, wanna come less and less. Get four days, they want a real four days.
That was a conversation that Dr. Huberman and I had today, so I'm thinking there's gonna be some changes come down the path of that. Well, with the hours and the days and the things that need to be taken care of.
But we do want to do that, we, I just, you know, we just gotta know so we can budget it when the, by the time the budget's due.
Well, I've asked the principals to be more involved in the federal budget because if we're a D school, then we need to be doing something differently to bring that grade up.
And, uh, once again, gonna say academics has to be, get in those, go in your schools and look, academics isn't always a priority in your schools. It's gotta be a priority and that's just, that's just the facts, like.
And again, we need to know that it's not being followed through as a priority. We can't, we can't hear you once a year.
I know.
And, and say, well, gosh, we didn't know this was going on, we didn't know this was going on.
I agree with you. Another thing is you can't wait until letter grades come out to worry about how we're doing academically.
But if, you know, doing the same old thing, it didn't work.
Maybe we can include some of this data that you've got shown here for the success indicators into our principal reports and that way it can be explained to us, uh, at these meetings, at least quarterly, I would say, to understand where students are and where we're falling behind. Um, and if the pressure needs to be on the students or if the pressure needs to be on the teachers, you know, we can figure that out. Instead of at the end of the year, we can look at that data, you know, at least, I would say, at least quarterly throughout the year.
Your, your students have to be motivated in here too, and y'all know that, you know that. You've gotta have your students, you mean, they, when they take those assessments, they have to care. We did makeup testing for the last two or three weeks and the students were finishing in five or 10 minutes. They were just clicking and wanted out. So, I don't know one kid that did a makeup test that the teacher didn't come back and say, well, they took their time. No, they were done in 10 minutes. So, um, we do the incentives, we do the, you know, we try, we do the, uh.
What Dylan was talking about, uh, and have it compared to where we've been previously.
Yes, like I just did with the, like what she just did with the, uh, star reading. We compared it from last year to this year and said, hey.
We've seen that this year once.
Yeah, we've seen it.
You've seen, you've seen progress monitoring out at once?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, if we're gonna do it quarterly, it needs to be in the previous quarters. And then, I know some of the data's changed with the previous years and that'll let us know before the end of the year, oops, we did it again.
So, we have a district strategic plan too, it's called the AR app, it's been around for two years. Um, you're approving the, uh, the, uh, assurances tonight for it. Um, it's all your title money that you get, um, you're, we only get two hundred and something thousand federal money, so we're not getting millions of dollars here. But we're, um, you're paying for with that, you're paying for your programs that the strategic plan says what high professional, um, high quality professional learning are y'all using in your school districts? And that's where you, you use your federal learning for the baby work to come in. You use it for your inmates on, for your progress marching, your I-Lit, your star reading, all that.
No, I just think we need to look into this more. Um, if we're doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result, it's insanity. So, this needs to be dug in a little bit more and figure something out, um, if it's this big of an issue. Uh, but I would say a table for now and we'll dig in deeper over the next, until the next video.
All right, uh, y'all will go back to your folder I handed out to you, we'll run through a few financial things here. Now, if you, of course, your expenditures are more than what your, uh, revenue is and that's the reason you've got a declining balance. Uh, one of the sheets I want you to look at will be this one right here, historical enrollment. Because I took the job here in two thousand and fifteen and it shows we had seven hundred and fifty-seven students. At two thousand and four, twenty-five, it showed six hundred and eight. But if you drop down to the next table, it shows you at six oh four for twenty-five, twenty-six and then it drops all the way to five hundred and fourteen on two thousand and thirty-four, thirty-five. So, for the next ten years, you're expected to leave essentially another hundred students. Uh, so, those are things that you need to project in your process, uh, making sure that you keep your staff as low as you possibly can and lean as you possibly can for the simple reason, overstaffing is what's got you in the situation that you're in right now. So, look at your projections and projections are pretty well right because I worked on the facilities and then everything was based on projections and that's what we, that's what we look at. Uh, if you look at your next sheet, this is for next year. Uh, it shows the foundation student is, for, for students going up to eight thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars, uh, which, uh, will bring your, uh, funding up, your foundation funding up. Uh, last year, uh, it was two hundred and thirty-one thousand, so you're gonna be up on that. Uh, your declining enrollment will go away, but if you look at your funding, based on the number of students you have and your third quarter daily average was five hundred and ninety-nine students and that's what your funding was based on, uh, y'all's increase in revenue will be three hundred and seventy-one thousand, six ninety-five. So, if you can manage to cut out some expenditures with an increase, then you're gonna get to that point. Uh, always notice that your, uh, balance, where it says ending balance in your negatives, all of those negatives have to be transferred out and paid, like your teacher salary fund will be transferred, uh, which will be more than two million, uh, sixty-eight thousand because you still have payroll. Uh, last year's June payroll was five hundred and thirty thousand, two seventy-seven, but that's a double payroll. Uh, so you need to be aware of that. Uh, one of the hints that I will give you is always like if you are in a May board meeting, go back to last year's May board meeting and look at what your differences are on your expenditures, your revenue. And that way you kinda keep a finger on the pulse of what's going on in your district as far as your finances go. Uh, because if you could, if you could go back to last year and you were doing that, you would probably put the brakes on a lot sooner and said, hey, we, we can't continue doing this down this same road. So, uh, you need to know what your bills are. Uh, y'all have a payment, uh, debt service payment, uh, four hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine, I think the total of it. With, well, there's another fifty-five thousand payment made this month, so you're looking at five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's what your house payment is, that's what you're paying for your bills. So, you need to be aware that your house payment's gonna come due and I think the, and you said that's pulled out three times a year, okay? But always pull out last year's financials, that'll help you a whole lot. So, your foundation funding is gonna be more coming in in July and you also get a check in August. Last year was August twenty-seventh, this year I think it'll be August the twenty-eighth. It'll be four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and that's LERN money. You'll get that one time a year, it'll come in in August. What we have to do is, we're projected in with two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Hopefully, there was some overbudgeting that went in. If you overbudgeted by a hundred thousand dollars, then you could have another hundred thousand and that's two twenty. That will get you into that situation. You have a payroll coming up in, uh, in July for the extended contract people, it's a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, we've got several expenditures I will point out to you here that's gotta be paid in July. And then you'll get your foundation funding July the twenty-eighth. Well, your teachers are gonna get paid on July the twentieth, so you've got to be able to have enough money to get from that point A to point B. Uh, and then if you can get to August the twenty-eighth, you'll have your foundation funding plus your LERNZAC money and you should be good once you get past that.
I thought June, I think in June, they get June and July, right?
Right, that was the five hundred and thirty thousand dollars last year is what they, the double salary was.
For two forty people, yeah.
On the twentieth.
Right. So, if your, if your payroll went out on the twenty-eighth, it'd be great because your money's gonna be out on the same day, but you've got a period of time there that you have to look out for. Uh, just look at what we've done so far to get you in a little better shape, starting in July at one. Uh, you had four assistant football coaches, we're moving that, one assistant football coach and the stipends that go with that. Uh, generally, if they have two sports, two thousand apiece, like in football, it's two thousand apiece for junior high, senior high, plus another thousand for track or a spring sport, so you've got those things that you're saving. Uh, elementary positions, so far there's been two that have been filled. Uh, we have pre-K resignation tonight, we have three kindergarten teachers. Uh, we're looking very serious at kindergarten because it's gonna depend on how many students sign up. If you only need two teachers and you've got three already on staff, then one of those can go down to the pre-K and you don't have to hire somebody, so you're saving another position there. We're losing one custodial position, there were three custodians, now we're down, where of course, we're looking for two custodians and rather than putting them on two hundred and forty day contracts, I recommend putting them on two hundred day contracts. Uh, with the new flooring system, used to, they had to strip and wax every floor in the school district, now everything's polished concrete. So, uh, Mr. Woods has already checked into it, it's three hundred and fifty dollars a day for a machine. Uh, they're gonna run that machine, get everything done and then save us money rather than buy it on the machine itself costs about twelve thousand dollars. So, uh, but we'll save money by going to a two hundred day contract. That's five days before school starts, five days after school starts to make sure the building's gonna be good. Virtual classrooms, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a student. We've got biology teacher who's assigned and accepted resignation in that. Uh, it can be absorbed into the system. If there's extra students, then they can go to the virtual Arkansas and fill in. I think it says a hundred and twenty-five dollars a student is what they head down for, okay? And of course, if you're running them through Phillips Community College, you're getting free and you're getting college credit. I know one student here a few years ago with scholarships, done, uh, incurred credit here in school and got paid to go to school where a lot of kids get out with a hundred thousand dollar bill, you know, or more when they get out of college. She got paid to go to college and didn't owe anything when she got out. So, our kids have a great opportunity and I don't know how you encourage them to do that. I mean, you can't make them do it, but, you know, there again, communication with parents, as a parent, I'd be jumping on that shit. The LEA supervisor's salary was eighty-one thousand, eight seventy-two, it's been dropped down, uh, twenty days less and salary has been fifty-seven, so you're saving twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four there. Uh, head football coach position's seventy-three thousand, one fifty-seven, you've got the stipend out, so you're down five thousand there, sixty-eight thousand, one fifty-seven. So, those are the things that we've done that will roll over into July when it comes time to pay that salary out that you're not gonna have some low expenses and hopefully it will get you back on the positive track there, okay? Any questions on that? Okay. Uh, the next thing is the board elections, you should have a sheet in here like this. It's explaining that board elections now are gonna be held in March. Those of you who are coming up for election in November, you're not lucky enough to get off, you have to ride it out until March. Sorry, I didn't make the law, law just doesn't what the law says. Uh, so, then you're, uh, that way your transition terms, it says either four years or six years. So, it doesn't give an option of five years. So, I'm assuming you'll either have to set it up on four year so that you always have board members with experience on there that they don't follow the law the same time, okay? I don't think you have to vote on it, you just have to abide by the law.
About terms of law or six?
Oh, yeah, y'all have to determine that.
Yeah.
Yeah, y'all will need to vote on that at some point, don't know that that'd be necessary or not. Uh, the next thing I've added in is, I've never done this in nineteen years as a superintendent, but I gave you a copy of the elementary and the high school, uh, master schedule. I don't want y'all to become professionals in scheduling, I don't want you to get involved in scheduling. Just understanding this is where your money is at, is in your teaching staff. And I counted, uh, I think it was twenty-two either advisory classes or study halls, which I talked to Coach Morgan and he said advisory class is just a study hall. So, if there's twenty-two of them and you have teachers that have seven periods in a conference hour, that's three teachers' positions. That's two hundred thousand dollars for study halls.
That's not true. Advisory periods are not study halls, those are RTI periods, yeah.
That's what he told me, they were just a glorified study hall. Are they required?
Those are RTI, those, those were determined before you could add it and put in the classroom teachers, yes, they are. Those are, that's, now, study halls, study hall, I think you have some study halls.
We have some study halls, but that.
But no, advisory, they have students and they're, um, they have a pacing guide and everything they're supposed to be doing with them, it's an RTI period.
So, that's why our test scores are up, right?
You just got the letter grade based on last year, so you gonna get this year's letter grade until October.
Okay, well, we'll see how that works out then, anyway. You can look at your class sizes and see where some of them can be combined. If they have seven in one and eight in another, then you can easily have fifteen in one class, if both have two classes.
I guess he had about two athletic periods to me.
Yes. Uh, I know like, um, Josh, I think was at elementary, what, four hours a day? And Coach Brew was at. And Coach Brew was at elementary.
Algebra one, three periods. You're talking algebra one, three periods.
So this is what your schedule seats?
That's one same, how many we have per?
Per class?
Yeah.
Well, it tells you how many seats are filled, seats used.
Fourteen.
Okay.
One second, that's twelve, another one's nine.
Now, it's not that easy just to say, okay, we're gonna buy these up, but understand there's room for improvement because of our class size. When your ratio is eleven to one, and that's what I've been told it is, then there's room for improvement there, okay? That'll give you something to think about. Next on the agenda, integrity, Jim, you'd asked me about that, so y'all have a sheet in here on integrity, it tells a little bit about it.
About one thing, I checked up on summer panels, they're supposed to be cleaned twice a year for efficiency. Can you find out if it's safe for kids to walk in there and?
No.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Here's what, here's what I was told when I contacted them, they said if it falls below five percent, if they lose five percent, that Blue Path will come in and clean them, because that's how they make their money, and they're losing money when it drops below that, so they're the ones that clean them. Our student, nobody touches.
Looks like it dusted and all get out.
Well, evidently they're losing money. One of the reasons, we're, after, we're paying them and doing everything we're supposed to do, we're making or generating twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars is what their estimate is here. When the thing went in, it was fifty-nine thousand dollars was the estimated savings annually, so you're not meeting that goal. And Angie and I have been doing a little checking, she was doing the checking anyway, we're not sure that that elementary, new elementary was added on, the old elementary was taken off, so really not getting credit for the new elementary, so hopefully when you add that on there, you're gonna see the savings nearly double, I hope, so. But that's where we're at as far as cleaning them.
So they're gonna clean them?
That's their responsibility.
Okay. I mean, they're not, that's not falling that much, you use and put everything's covered, you're talking, they're on the ground?
Well, we don't need any students on the ground.
I do, I just want to make, ask my nephew, I could pay out for a little.
The appraisal, Ms. Pam agreed to do it, it's gonna be very difficult to do, but she said she would do it, and she's gonna do it for six hundred dollars and donate three hundred dollars of it back to the district, or the old elementary school property. We do have someone that's interested, it's time you get the appraisal, we simply take bids, and if it beats what the appraisal comes out, then y'all have an opportunity to sell that property. Tractor repair, we've got a tractor that's got a hub issue, there again, you're looking at thirty-five hundred dollars.
How about a new tractor?
It's a new tractor, don't ask me how the hub was ruined, I'm just telling you what I'm told.
I got one older than that, I put that sucker through the ringer, now I don't understand it, but anyway.
You said new, how new is it?
I bet the sucker ain't got thirty yards on it.
Let's see, I bought, I bought the thing, and I was here in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, so it's close to ten years old, Jim.
I bet you it ain't got thirty yards.
And I bought it used.
And that means if they idle it, the bag is out, pulling in, it ain't mowed.
They use it, they use it to mow the additional fields and grass areas, and they have a, they have a finishing mower that they're using to do that, which really I thought they'd have probably little bush hog by now, but anyway, they had, the tractor repair's around thirty-five hundred. Gym repaired, I've got that here, I think it was eighty-two hundred dollars, is what Hargrove estimated it. If y'all have been by there, y'all had some wind damage pretty good while back, there's pieces of it laying everywhere, there's openings in the gym with the birds and the moisture and the mold and everything else, there again, gonna try to push that into where you have it in July, but that needs to be taken care of pretty quick.
Talking about the eze on the roof?
Yes, there's, you know, there's pieces of it just laying all around the gym, which that needs to be picked up and thrown away, but.
For a good while.
Yes, so it needs to be done, I've noticed a few other things that need to be picked up around here, but I'll go over that right then. Elementary school roof, I got the contractors up here, and the company is Carlisle, and they're supposed to come, they've got it set up to fix the leaks in the elementary roof, the thing's under warranty, it's got a twenty-year roof on it, so mine's been left leaking, I'll leave that up to y'all. Y'all got the school board election updates, gave you that. Next thing was to approve the legislative audit, there were no findings, there were some minor things that they recommended changing, maybe a coating error or something, but as far as any major things, so you need to approve.
Make a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four school year legislative audit? Motion by Mr. Adams, second. Mr. Jones, all first, say aye? Oh, six of them.
Okay. The next thing was approve the school year federal assurances, G E P A, that's something you have to do annually.
I stand for.
Unless y'all want Belinda to talk for another thirty minutes.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school year federal assurances and a G E P A statement. Bob Jones, second. Second, Mr. Jones, all first, say aye? Oh, six of them.
Lawn care bids?
Yeah.
Did you want to say that loud? Uh, this lawn care bid shows for thirty-two cuts here, and twenty-one cuts at the old element, or the old elementary school area for a total of thirty-three thousand, seventy-eight dollars. Now, will that change if we decide, can we redo this, are we locked in? If we say yes to this, are we locked in with these twenty-one cuts at the old elementary school?
I would think that'd be a conversation we would need to have with him before we did that, I mean, if you sell the property, most definitely you shouldn't have to be so responsible.
I don't know what you voted on that.
You voted on it, you voted on it.
Right.
Unless you wanna vote on accepting the bid with the deduction with the old elementary school property if sold.
Yeah.
That'd be the way to do that, that way you get your, because he's just mowing it based on what he's been doing right now.
Per mowing, so we did whatever mowing we.
Is that the only bid? We just got one bid?
One bid is all that came in, yes. Dylan Martin.
You'll make that motion, how you ready?
Okay, we approved the motion, but with the elementary school, we'll do it pro rata for how many times it's actually mowed, if we get it sold. If it cuts to twenty-one times, the contract's the same.
Motion by Mr. Adams, second. Second, Mr. Chris Carter Lewis, all first, say aye? Oh, six of them.
Okay, there was something that wasn't on the agenda in Officer Townsend there, it was an M O U, y'all been talking about it with Sheriff's Department, over resource officer. I've got an estimate in here for them to change the ductwork around and, and have an air conditioner in that off, just the office space, that doesn't include fixing everything else that's wrong with the building, but just the office space, and they've agreed to do the work, they've kind of got their labor captive, and so they can do paint work, the putty work, and all of those type things, so. But that's something that we need to do, and I've got it over here on my desk, the M O U, y'all discussed it in the past, what did y'all decide on it?
We were talking about like repairing the HVAC and stuff like that.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think we were talking about putting, kind of a, just getting it fixed to where it's gonna last us about five years, and then looking at possibly replacing the whole thing after that time.
My suggestion would be to fix the office area for them to have, and then the rest of it can be fixed, because there's a lot of things you can do with that building, but to spend all of that money right now, like I say, we're trying to get you through until the lease expires.
There's at least one working over there, isn't there?
I think so.
So they can vintage that room?
That's what their plan is, but it was like four thousand something dollars off.
So, Jim?
Nothing didn't have a roof on it or something?
I think it didn't have a ceiling on it.
No, it does, they will have to, they will have to extend that wall up, and the duct worker had to be moved over into it, that's what that bid was for, was getting that air conditioner and everything into that room.
They're gonna extend the wall up?
I mean, we'll have to buy the materials, but the prisoners will, but extend the wall and do the sheetrock work and do the painting and that stuff. Is that a problem, if we go ahead with that?
Do we need to add that to this?
I think so, yeah, it just didn't get added on.
So we'll make a motion to extend the room?
Make a motion to.
Motion by Mr. Tiny, second. Second, Mr. Chris Carter Lewis, all first, say aye? Oh, six of them.
I'm gonna make a motion to, well, there was multiple options, is Mr.?
Townsend, too. Oh, you're talking about fixing all the units, there were several different options?
Yeah, there were three options, I went and did a visit over there and looked at it, and then we kind of talked about, there was like repairing a fan motor here, you know, evaporators over here, things like that, like instead of replacing all the units, which was gonna cost like thirty-eight thousand dollars, we were talking about a, I think it was like an eight to ten thousand dollar fix for just a Band-Aid type situation.
My thought would be to take care of the office area now and just piecemeal it, and, you know, because you're not gonna be using that other area.
There's some, there's some on the ductwork, really.
Right, it's just mostly ductwork for, to get it over there and take care of that period.
Yep.
Okay.
How much is it?
I think it's four thousand something dollars.
Motion to repair the air conditioning system.
Let's see, right here it is, four thousand, three hundred and ninety-five fifty, and this is the total work.
Yeah, that's just the, that's just the ductwork there. Move these, see if there's a stack under there as well.
Yeah. Sheriff's Department's good with doing that, doing, not for helping that with it.
Still not know. That was the discussion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Tiny, second, Mr. Jones, all first, say aye? Oh, six of them.
Okay, we have two buses out there, Jim questioned one of them because it's kind of low riding, the air is out of the thing, costs nineteen thousand dollars to fix the motor, and they said it would probably be six months to a year, you'd be doing it all over again. That's the bus y'all replaced with the special ed bus that you bought. My suggestion is to take bids and get rid of it, it's just sitting out there, let the grass grow up, and there's another one out there that they never use, he has sub buses, and so it needs to go too, it's an older bus, if y'all give me permission, I'll take bids on them. We've sold them before, generally the salvage guy gets them, because he'll pay more for them than most anybody else, some people like them to beer camps and stuff like that. Now, once that one will run, he said he just had to boost it off, but he said that needed batteries, there's like two hundred dollar a battery, he'll put the batteries on it, so we'll boost it off, let it go as it is, okay?
We'll make a motion to accept bids for bus number three, bus number seventeen. Motion by Mr. Adams, second, second by Mr. Jones, all first, say aye? Oh, six of them.
Okay, looking at the food service, we took bids, they were right there, I don't know what we've done, but anyway, OPA and another one, we've been spending a great deal of money in the cafeteria, as a matter of fact, it's in the hole pretty good right now. Y'all saw the, what was it, forty-eight thousand dollars or something last month to OPA for their services. They're offering to do whatever it is they do, just to monitor and, you're supposed to be getting a discount on your food, but I have my questions about that, I'll let Micah speak a little further about it, she's looking more in tune with it, so we'll, we'll give her the floor for a few minutes with what our recommendations are.
Here are the bids, if anybody wants to look at them, it's on page fifty or fifty-two.
Right there.
Right here.
Right there.
This one, that's K twelve. So with food service right now, we were with OPA, and we're on a fixed cost rate. These bids are for what they consider like management, what they would do is charge us a flat rate that's on there per month, it's not by how much food we serve and all that, we would still be respons, they would help us buy our food at their discounted cost. It's up to y'all. What we've just, this is what we've.
The cheapest bid was two thousand dollars per month for that management service, and after discussing it, I felt like you've got a manager, I'm not sure if you go looking at what you're paying for paper products through them, that you can't buy the paper products cheaper, and my recommendation would be the district take it back for a year and see how it works out, it can't be any worse, I promise.
I'm kind of agreeing, because evidently the state is, they're gonna provide free breakfast next year forever, so that cuts us out of that already.
This is what we would have saved in April if we were doing it ourselves.
How much?
Thirteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. That's with our employees, their benefits, how much we spent on food, how much we spent on milk, and all paper goods, and cleaning supplies.
Why are we not using trays anymore, just washers down?
No, 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 we use regular trays at the elementary school, high school, we've been using papers since December, because we've only had one school district employee.
Yeah, that's right, because OPA wouldn't fill that position back.
Hey, now, that's another question, how many positions are currently funded, paid by OPA, how many is paid by others?
Zero.
We're, we pay all.
Okay, but they were supposed to.
They were supposed to provide one, I think they provided her for a couple of weeks, was their explanation, and then they took her to another school, but she was supposed to be helping on the line, but that didn't happen all the time either.
As far as OPA, I would say that bad business already.
I just feel like your district ought to take that back over, that's more work on her, but, hey, that's what y'all paying her for.
How many trees y'all doing this?
They, they brought those two.
They killed that tree.
So what's this one, this other one?
This is K twelve.
Okay, and you guys don't wanna go with either one?
It was like thirty-two. I think y'all just go back to the district.
I know it's gonna be more work on myself, but I'm willing to do it, it's Serra district money.
And, I mean, you're the person running the show.
We might have to hire a cook, yeah.
You think this is, that's the better option?
We've got two positions open right now that we have advertised, because we have two retiring at the elementary school, we're gonna replace those two with just one and replace one at the high school.
So you're actually losing more, you're gaining a salary.
We're still, and we're still not charging anybody, so the collection is.
No, here's, here's the problem with that, based on the C E P, and I was the one that actually got that started several years ago, if you were eighty percent free and reduced, then every kid ain't free. The problem we're having now is every kid eats free, so the parents have quit sending in the information that's necessary to show that we are free and reduced. I told them to send out a notice to the parents that your students fixing to be paid, because you go to a paid status, so the district wouldn't be picking up, if the district paid it, they'd be picking up all of those meals that aren't free, so. I know we're still eighty percent or above in free and reduced, I mean, we have a lot of poverty kids, and we've lost a lot of kids, and a lot of those weren't poverty kids, so.
I don't think the parents didn't understand right out, if y'all want us to continue paying for the old lunch and everything, fill the forms.
I sent letters out to the one, I have a spreadsheet that shows who has filled out one and who has not, I sent letters out last week that states, I need this filled out or your student will be considered paid status.
When do we need to have that done by?
Yours is already done.
I mean, what, like?
I have to have it, since we're P two this year, I have to have it by the last day of school, I can still enter meal statuses up till the last day of school.
And that's for next year, this is for the next year funding?
So next year, we will be getting more back in general, because all students statewide will receive free breakfast. The only ones that we will have to pay for are the ones for lunch that are considered paid status.
This will cut our, this will cut our costs down, because we've been providing breakfast in them.
Right, is there like a drop box, they can come and drop the thing off then, or something?
They can mail them in, they can send them to the office.
I'm just worried about the, with the time.
I've already got some of them back, there was not very many that I had to send, it was just families that had multiple that I needed back.
That's what we need, my recommendation is reject.
We might wanna give them a call or something, just.
I have this week.
I mean, if it gets closer, we still haven't done it.
I made several phone calls today.
Well, just tell them their kids will have to start paying for meal, and they'll get their business done.
I put a nice letter attached to them that said, you know, I really needed this filled out for the last day of school. I did do it nice.
Someone might make a motion to approve England School District taking back over the food service for.
Reject all bids and district take back over the food.
Yeah. Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Tidy second.
Second.
Thank you by Mr. John Law Thursday night. Oh, six oh.
Okay, y'all remember the Sun Life thing where we had stock in a company that, uh, around thirty-two thousand dollars? Uh, need y'all to approve. The England School Board of Directors, Points Barry Scott has authorized representative to sign documents pertaining to sale of the Sun Life shares. So they can get that ball rolling and you can collect your thirty-two thousand dollars without any taxes or anything. That's just go directly into the district. And.
Motion by Mr. Adams, please, second.
I drew it too quick.
Uh, second.
Thank you by Mr. Adams. All of Thursday night. Oh, six.
I was just gonna say. Get some money back in the store.
Say, all you have to do, y'all have to sign that, uh, you know, y'all have, may have to do an addendum if it drags out past while I'm here, so. You'd have to put Dr. Hogan there. No, just whenever it's time. It might be, take care of before y'all, before I get out of here.
My baby buys a Ford, they sound like. My baby buys a Ford, look at that.
That's it. Some people say I'm tired, you know, and I consider myself a jerk. Okay, our best bill, that's your credit card bill.
What do you got credit cards with that?
Well, y'all have credit cards, Jim. And it seems to be difficult. Sometimes your credit card bill here is up to thirty-two thousand dollars. Uh, there've been issues with getting the receipts back. These are not, I think March and April have been reconciled. But going back probably a couple of years, you're looking at, uh, about ten thousand dollars or so that has not been taken care of. There's no receipts and the auditor says you have to pay it. So we have no accountability or no, no, uh, I've taken all the credit cards up. Or I had them taken up. They're in my, or in Angie's office, uh, being very restrictive with them. You also have issues that people have put the school's credit card on their personal Amazon account. And so that creates a problem. My personal thought is, is you take them, put them through a shredder, but, you know, that's something that you might want to take out. But anyway, that bill has to be.
I don't mind, I don't mind them having them with their alcohol on a, a athletic trip or something like that, but you gotta, you gotta show receipts.
Yeah, well, they, they have to be monitored a little better than what they've been monitored, put it that way.
So the way for me doing my job, I have to say what I want to buy and it has to go through an approving official. Approving official says, yes, you can purchase that and it's controlled and monitored that way. Do we have anything of that sort?
Yes.
No.
Where has it been? I hear yes, I hear no.
Well, they're, they do the, they do the POs. That's their authorization to use the card.
Who does the PO?
They do it themselves or their secretary does it. The principal signs and superintendent signs it or federal programs signs it. The problem is, is this, I believe, and I'm going back from the beginning, to the beginning of statements and I go in line by line and looking at our end payment history. And I'm looking to see and make sure what's been paid. I found a couple of small things, but I'm only about four statements in because it takes a long time. But, cause the reference numbers are about fifteen numbers long that you have to search for.
Right.
Uh, but I think some, some of this happened during COVID and right after the COVID week, you know, there's a vague, you know, there's some stuff going on. With some, and I don't know, but I just, I'm going back trying to find where it has happened. But for the most part, since August or September of twenty-two. Ms. Debbie takes the statement, she hits it from everybody. So I believe from August of twenty-two till now, everything's been paid for. There may be something small that hasn't. But I'm going back, like, the missing money should be somewhere in that timeframe from COVID to.
So is there.
Late twenty-two.
Monthly, do you guys go like, say, the middle of the month fifteenth or whatever, you go through, we see what we spent and you match receipts to what we spent or we wait until the end of the year, do you so?
We wait till we get their statement.
It's a month, each month they say.
Each month that it's gone through and Ms. Debbie makes contact and says, hey, we don't have this. Now, we, they need to do better for some of them. They're probably gonna do a great job, don't get me wrong. They're gonna be able to do a great job. There's some people we have to struggle to get stuff from, but, but we did it.
The way I look at it is if you don't turn those receipts in, strike one, slap on the rest, strike two, alright, we're getting serious, strike three, you just lost your privileges to use these cards. And as a coach, that's gonna be a big deal.
Well, Dave, I understand that that works really well, but then again, Ms. Lisa and Debbie's probably spent a half a day.
Right.
Trying to reconcile and find stuff because of the way it's, it's done.
It's not their fault that things aren't getting turned in or whatever, you know what I mean?
No, but it creates problems.
Right. Yeah, I'm talking about these people using it?
I think it just needs to be a lot more restrictive.
I do too. I mean, even to the point of you're out on a trip, you had to buy, you almost had to record what you're there for. How many kids were you involved, you know what I'm saying? Who, you know?
I mean, limitations to essentially a per diem, uh, of when you go there. Like, okay, this is estimated cost of what it's gonna cost there. That's how much each kid gets to spend. Keep it under this, you know?
And, you know, getting POs approved prior to expenditures, that's been an issue with some too. Uh, this bill will be a lot more restrictive and, uh, I'll leave that to Dr. Hogan and see how she wants to handle that next year. They can come up with her policy to deal with that. What was it, ten thousand?
There's about ten thousand dollars that's unaccounted. That's why I'm going back to the very beginning of the statements.
We vote.
We need, we need to, we need to vote to pay that bill.
It's like ten thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars or something.
When does that do? That bill that we're talking about, when was it due?
I don't, we don't know what these expenditures are because.
No, I mean, what month? Did it come through this past month?
No, it's been, we, it's been an ongoing issue. We've, we've known about it. We've spoken about it to previous administration. And it's just not been taken care of.
We're trying to pay the, we're trying to zero the credit card.
I spoke to the auditor about it, this last audit. And we're not to have a line of credit without outstanding balance. That is considered a line of credit.
Dr. Hogan will be able to decide if you're gonna issue them out or.
Well, that's, that's where I'm saying that if, if these aren't gonna match monthly and you see an expenditure that is not accounted for by receipt or approved by approving official. That card needs to be locked and, you know, either reported as fraud, you know what I mean? Something because you gotta figure where that's coming from.
But if they use your card, you should have to get back and just come back.
We have, we have that system, we put that system in place, uh, there, you know, getting the receipts turned in. We have that accounted for now.
Do you know who had that card?
Did I each, I gotta go back and find that expense because we just get one statement that has everybody's on there and it doesn't break it down. And when you pay your bill, they don't apply, you know, we put those reference numbers in there, they just apply it to your total balance. So I've gotta go line by line on every statement and search our end payment history to find out what's not been paid.
So there, there's more than one credit card at issue as far as what hasn't been paid. It's not just on one credit card?
Possibly.
Possibly.
I don't, you know, I've got to find.
Well, those cards are issued for convenience and if this takes more time on the back end, it does just come over and get a check. It just seems like, but you've already taken a mile up, so that's a.
Only two that are out, Mr. Woods has and Brian have for emergency circumstances. They're good about it.
All the others are locked.
Someone make a motion to approve our delinquent RBS credit card bill for ten thousand. That's a chance, I'm leaving. Mr. Adams, second. Second. Thank you by Mr. John Law Thursday night. Oh, six. Everyone take a check that you're gonna, I mean, this, this will be open policy change.
Yeah, this is gonna be a huge policy here added to it.
Student insurance coverage proposal, then that has an optional catastrophic, uh, student coverage proposal. What have they done in the past year? Have they used the catastrophic or just the.
I believe last year we picked up the catastrophic coverage.
We gotta have this right, I think, so.
Right.
All students, every student. So you can make a motion to approve the student insurance coverage proposal, five thousand nine thirty-seven thirty-three. For movement, Ms. Lewis, they second. I'm second. Second by Mr. Adams on Thursday night.
Is that with the catastrophic, right?
Yeah.
It's with catastrophic?
Yeah, it's one fifteen.
Does that include catastrophic now?
Did you get that, Ms. Lisa?
With the catastrophic?
With the catastrophic. Fire and security contract renewal proposal, did fire inspections, uh, breaker systems and that type of thing.
That's mandatory.
Mm-hmm.
Someone make a motion, four thousand nine forty-seven.
Make a motion.
Mr. Tidy second. I'm second. Thank you by Mr. Adams on Thursday night. Oh, six. Currently speaking invoice for professional services. Someone make a motion to approve four thousand six eighty-six seventy-two. What does this do?
They are speech.
Yeah.
This is speech services.
It's like, it's like.
Therapy.
It's like online.
It's paid with federal money.
No, face therapy. They have therapists that came in, come into the school.
But we're not paying for this. It's federal money, right?
It, we, yeah, we pay for it, but it's paid out of federal money or Medicaid.
Make a motion, please. Motion by Mr. Tidy second.
Second.
Thank you by Mr. John Law Thursday night. Oh, six oh. Liberty Mills Preschool Services, we're part of that co-op.
Right.
Nine thousand seven oh four sixty-two. Is that a motion there, Ms. Lewis?
Oh, I can say that.
I thought you said oohs.
That, that was Ms. Linda, Ms. Linda Hoos, not a motion or nothing.
Is that a ooh motion?
Sure, sure.
Ooh, Mr. Tucker, please, second. Second by Mr. Adams on Thursday night. Oh, six oh.
Repeat Learning Incorporated.
Reading Eggs.
Reading Eggs. That's paid for with federal, is that correct?
It is. It's without management, but yes.
That's just what it's called. It's a reading program today.
Okay.
Go ahead, give up.
Motion by Mr. Adams, please, second. Second by Mr. Tidy, Thursday night. Oh, six oh.
American Learning Services invoice, thirty-eight sixty, in space and van.
We got a lot of stuff going on, don't we?
We do.
Paying for the federal money at the end of the year.
So we're gonna be positive.
Someone make a motion.
Make a motion.
American Service by Mr. Tidy second. I'm second. Thank you by Mr. Adams on Thursday night. Oh, six oh.
Good lord, there's another page.
Yes.
I can't have y'all two nights in a row getting late. Y'all get. Studies Weekly invoice.
Our world study weekly, someone make a motion to approve that invoice, four thousand forty-two ninety-eight. So move. Mr. John, please, second. Second by Mr. Tucker, is that you? Is that second or? On Thursday night. Oh, six oh.
Baby Group invoice, Science Professional Development.
Three thousand straight up. Someone make a motion.
When do we do, when do we do this PD?
We do it in June.
Okay, she is. When do we do this professional development?
They're doing it in June.
Doing it in June. Okay.
Was that part of the contract? I thought it was a P D.
Yeah, true.
Can you hear me?
Who made the motion?
I'll make it.
Mr. Tidy, second. Second. Thank you by Mr. John Law Thursday night. Oh, six oh.
Sports Stop invoice, y'all dealt with this back in October. I think the bid was over seven thousand dollars for baseball jerseys and pants. And y'all cut it down to just replacing the ones that did not get returned.
Right. I'll make a motion for twenty-five oh eight sixteen. So move. Mr. John, please, second. Second by Ms. Patricia Carter Lewis on Thursday night. Oh, six oh.
Okay, Rydell invoice, helmet reconditioning.
We have to do that every year if required. Three thousand seven forty-three twenty-five. Motion, Mr. Adams, please, second. Second by Mr. John Law Thursday night. Oh, six oh.
Okay, the next one is Mobile Communications America. That was the radios that y'all purchased. Y'all, uh, provided, uh, were provided a PO for forty-eight thousand something dollars. Uh, and the actual invoice and everything after taxes was fifty-three thousand six oh nine thirteen. If they, y'all didn't see all of that. So y'all owed an additional seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-three eighty-three with a late fee of five hundred and ninety-five seventy-nine. Making a total of eight thousand three hundred and sixty-nine.
This was part of the grant?
It was part of the grant, but no, this, you don't have any more money in the grant.
I know, but that was part of this.
That was part of that grant. This, this is gonna be paid out of district.
So we got due.
Ms. Lee.
Yeah.
Someone make a motion to approve this eight thousand three sixty-nine sixty-two.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Tidy, second. Thank you by Mr. Adams on Thursday night. Oh, six oh.
Before we get into the file, we're on the late fee.
Uh, yes. Uh, petition for transfer of students, Dominic Winthrow, Elizabeth Winthrow, Athena Winthrow, ages eleven, eight and six. A plan bluff to here. Is that correct?
Twenty-four, now, now to me. Something getting me.
Have they been in this district before? Have they been here this year?
No, no. Have they been in this district before? Winthrow children?
Recognize the names.
Okay.
That was the grade.
It says their address is in Pine Bluff.
The young?
Be transferred to England. They're fifth, second and first grade.
Sounds like we get it for a while. Is it grade or age?
Uh, that's grade right there.
Someone make a motion by Mr. Tidy, please, second. Thank you by Mr. Adams on Thursday night. Oh, six oh. It should be a sheet.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I don't think they have to, right? They turned it in before.
You said the resident district has.
Okay, uh, next thing was the new hires. Thought we had a special ed teacher coming in tonight, but we don't. Just need to confirm the superintendent's contract that y'all, that person that y'all employed last night. I'll let Joey has a motion.
We approved, uh, annual contract, but, uh, we didn't have in there that it'd be five hundred dollars a month for the car allowance and a hundred dollars a month for the cell phone allowance. And then if she comes early before July the first, we're gonna prorate the daily, uh, payment, uh, salary for that. So I'll make that in form of a motion. Mr. Adams, make a motion, please, second.
Second.
Thank you by Mr. John Law Thursday night. Oh, six oh. You ready? You, you're good. You almost like you ran it off the paper.
Lost one of my resignations. Uh, we got Blake Benson, uh, Brent Sherman and the pre-K director, what's her name?
Melinda Clark.
Melinda, Melinda Clark. Somebody moved, except those resignations.
Make a motion to approve through resignation is spoken. Mr. Tucker makes a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tidy, all of Thursday night. Oh, six oh. We'll make him up to a charity. Motion by Mr. Adams. Second by Mr. Tidy on Thursday night. Oh.